It's very wordy. It's a lot of information and we'll get through it as quickly and efficiently as we can. With me today is Von Pearson, who's with TSP Architects, who actually conducted the first portion of the space study, or to where we are to date with the space study. So the purpose of today is to share with you all of the information and all the steps that we've been through in really the last 12 months when it comes to the Law Enforcement Center, the end of the lease with the City of Redding, the extension to the lease and the space study that's been conducted. So I will just get started. Our order of information today is to give you a little bit of history, to talk about the space and the space study, and to talk about the extension to the lease that was done. I know this is difficult to read, but it gives you just a, I want to say a quick snapshot, but it also gives you some information that in 2000 is when the facility was completed, the construction of the Law Enforcement Center, the emergency operations and the adult detention center. So from July of 2001, we had an amended joint powers agreement with the City of Redding for the construction operation of the Law Enforcement Center. We added an appendix which outlined clerical services, evidence room tech, common equipment and computer support. It was agreed upon between the county board and the city council that the city would contribute a million dollars for a 15-year initial lease and agreed to share the maintenance and custodial expenses at a dividend prorated based on square footage occupied, which at the time was calculated at 16%. If there was early termination to that agreement, the city would be repaid for the number of years it did not occupy the LAC during the 15-year term at the rate of $66,666 per year. So that was the first chunk when they moved in. When we moved into the building, they joined us moving into the building. We then get to January 1 of 2014, which is when the next lease was negotiated with the City of Redding as to how do we move forward for the next 10, 15, 20, 30 years. So it was determined to go from January 1, 2014, to December 31 of 2023. At that time, both parties agreed to terminate the 15-year joint powers agreement and we entered into a shared use agreement. The term of the LAC office lease went, again, went from 2014 to 2023. In this agreement, the rent amount was inclusive of all utilities, custodial services, buildings, grounds and capital expenditures. There were specific amounts that were specified in the agreement from 2014 to 2020. After that, from 2021 through 2023, the rates, the annual rates were automatically adjusted by the previous year's annual average percentage change in the CPI, which was reported by the U.S. Department of Labor Statistics. So when we talk about space in the Law Enforcement Center and who's using what space, this gives you a snapshot of how the space was calculated, how the space was calculated then and how it's currently calculated today for the extension on the lease. So 16% of the space allocated in the Law Enforcement Center was the number used from 2001 to 2023 for the City of Redding. The rest of the space was considered Goodview County. This does not count the adult detention center. This only accommodates the Law Enforcement Center. By going through the exercise that we went through in the last year, we realized that we'd, the shared space percentage did not include a number of shared spaces, including the lobby, the public corridors, emergency operations, restrooms, public restrooms, training rooms, fitness rooms, equipment, mechanical rooms, and just some other, like just open spaces. We didn't factor. We were just looking at, you know, wall-to-wall in an office. So on the right, the green numbers reflects the updated number that we used starting January 1, 2024, which really is a change in the shared spaces when you look at the shared pieces that weren't into it. So initially, we were looking at 3,796 square feet of exclusive square space for the City of Redding, with 6,598 of 50% of shared space for the City of Redding for the first number of years. As of January 1, we were looking at 3,796 exclusive shared space for the City of Redding and 11,299 square feet of 50% shared space. So the City of Redding Police Department occupies 45% of the Law Enforcement Center. Goodview County's numbers also changed to reflect the 50% shared. We actually take on, we took on some additional square footage in the shared, which puts Goodview County at 55% of space occupied in the Law Enforcement Center. So this gives you a quick snapshot of the timeline of the space study. So with the lease ending, it was determined that, you know, it's best to talk about Goodview County and the City of Redding. Like what is, what is the future? What is the future of both departments? And are all the things that we need to do, are we able to do it within this facility together? So at that time, the Law Enforcement Center Committee met and agreed that we would individually sign contracts with TSP to do a space study. If you recall, TSP is the one who did the space study within the government center here. We also did some Justice Center work with them, some work out at Public Works. So that was in April of '23. Through that timeline, bringing us all the way to, so through the spring and summer of 2023, the Sheriff's Office staff, along with Facilities Maintenance, met with TSP to review the county's current information, talk about future space and talk about future growth. The City of Redding Police Department and their staff answered the same questions and met individually with TSP to review their information, their current needs, their future needs and what their growth is. And August 2023 is when the Law Enforcement Center Committee came back to the table and had a chance to review the first draft, the first shot from TSP as to what the findings were of that space study. So that's where I'm going to hand it over to Von because we'll share those results with you today, of the information that was collected in early 2023 and then the information that was presented to us at that time. So I can...
All right. Well, thank you for having me here today. And yeah, like I said, this, or like what Stacy mentioned, this presentation was given almost a year ago, August 28th in 2023. And to just reinforce that, it was sort of the initial, sort of, here's the data and here's some of the initial concept options. Certainly wasn't, you know, finalized, if you will. And that's kind of what Stacy will allude to once we're completed here. But yeah, just to give you an update, what this does identify is the needs that were discussed with Redding as well as with Goodview County. Give a little background on the process. We provided analysis of the space needs for both the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department and looked to identifying existing shared building adequacy, meaning how conducive is this building for their needs today, and look at their current five-year and 10-year space needs. So if there's additional staff or, you know, and with additional staff comes additional space needed potentially for locker rooms or other support spaces in the Our process, you know, to do this was, is really broken down into four phases. One is to gather the data. That's what Stacy mentioned. We talked with the staff, reviewed the facilities and, and just understand what we're working with. Then we defined the criteria, which really saying, okay, so if you had, you know, basically how many offices do you need? If you have school resource officers, or if you have these folks, or, and how does that all work? So really just defining what we, the problem we're trying to solve as I look at it, and so that we can understand how the existing building is able to, be able to adapt or use that information. Develop the concepts, the concepts, and that's sort of, the blue line's kind of identifying kind of really where we are at. We did do initial concepts to say, okay, so if these are the space needs, how are we able to do it in this building or not? You know, again, high level, enough to be dangerous, as I like to say. And then ultimately, which we had not been, we have not gotten to would be to identify cost. If we, if we did find a concept, then we would also then try to put a cost estimate together. But again, this study does not reflect any of that. We were really getting a direction to take, to explore further at this time, which we'll talk a little bit about here in a bit. Scroll the wrong way. And so, yeah, at that meeting, we reviewed the existing utilization, which is basically what Stacy was alluding to with who, who's using what spaces, who's utilizing each spaces, discuss those space needs, criteria, and then review initial high-level programming diagrams, as I've mentioned, to get feedback on option development. So getting into the space needs assessment, like I mentioned, we established three time horizons of immediately what is needed, five-year and 10-year, and then evaluated each of those spaces as far as their adequacy and capacity. So again, adequacy, how conducive is it? And in capacity, is there enough space, right? How many people can we fit in that locker room? Can you do the function that you need in there with, with the size that it is? And so those were just things that we had analyzed to make sure that we were clear on. Did I skip? No, I did not. Okay. So to kind of give you an overview of some of the deficiencies that we're needing. One, the, the blue ones are kind of the, I think, the bigger items that were brought up. One was just office space shortage for staffing needs. Again, I was looking at mainly the projected. I know the Sheriff's Office and the Police Department do a lot of work to kind of find the space that they need, but certainly there was office space shortage for staffing needs as each of the departments grew and what we will show here soon. We also had, you know, and because of that, staff support spaces are shortage due to the staffing needs, locker rooms, fitness, break areas. Some of the things that were brought up were just like a nursing room, or a sleeping room, or mental health rooms, given the nature of the occupations. Evidence processing and storage was undersized. And even since this report, I know that the Sheriff's Office has done a lot of work to kind of clean some of this up and maybe even make things work better than they were before. But again, this was almost a year ago when we reviewed this. So then, yeah, a shortage of adequate storage space, shortage of maintenance space, talking with Tim and his team, just some of the needs there. There is an undersized indoor parking. There is a garage there with, that both entities use. The Emergency Operations Center was not in ready state, as we say. So, you know, ideally, it's ready to go. If there was ever an emergency, there is, there is a little bit of time that's needed to set it up. Overlapping functions, there are some spaces. For example, there's a break room. That's also, if there was a soft or hard interview, that there, it was also an observation room, so that people wouldn't be able to use break because they were observing an interview that was going on, et cetera. Undersized training facility, parking lot, and a parking lot capacity. Just, you know, there's a lot of squad cars and personal cars of, of staff around the facility. And the one thing that, and just to be clear in all of this, is that we did not review, you know, really the adult detention center in terms of those space needs, as well as some of the comments about a juvenile detention center and all that. We did not get into that. It was primarily just the law enforcement, Law Enforcement Center portion of the facility. So this is, this is what we were looking at as far as the space needs summary. And you can kind of see the different horizons in terms of current, what they need now, which is sort of the zero years, five years and 10 years. I won't get into a whole lot of those numbers, but I think really the bottom, the percent increase is probably the most valuable, just to give you an order of magnitude. One, that is, that, you know, kind of currently they need about a 20, 20% additional space, and then it kind of grows a little bit smaller, you know, every five years. I will say that a majority of that, those space needs were for the training, for, based on our discussions, what was needed for training, evidence, the evidence processing and the evidence storage, and primarily those two. I mean, there was a few others as well, but I mean, those are bigger, I'll say bigger box spaces, if you will, that tend to, once you need space, that can escalate quickly. I think certainly the office space, certainly for Redding, I think the office space is manageable. And there were some things that would have had have been done to kind of fit the future growth for Goodview County as well for their, for their future space needs. As you can kind of tell there, you know, 80 square feet to 120 square feet is not much space. That can be accommodated, but as the, the county's looking at, you know, upwards of 1,000 square feet as we go through the years. So ultimately, what it came down to, and primarily because I think of that training and evidence, is that we were unable to meet the immediate five-year, 10-year needs without additional square footage, either on or off-site. Again, at that time, as we had been discussing. And so at that time, we, we reviewed some concept options. I'll just summarize what those were for you here today. But to meet the space needs of the current facility, we had strategized four approaches. One was to relocate the EOC, the dispatch and the training off-site, primarily because they have related functions and a bigger box. And then, and those are bigger spaces that could, could also be used. We looked at an option of relocating training, just the training component off-site, looked at building an addition onsite, which is, has its challenges just given the, the site and otherwise, but nonetheless, took a look at it. And then ultimately, option four would be to have Redding Police Department completely relocated off-site as well. I think that's, yeah. And so, like I said, we had developed some options there, but really the intent of those, again, was nothing, nothing was decided at that time. It was really just giving some ideas. Our intent and goal was to say if there was some momentum in one direction, we would focus in on that one and define more detail. But at that time, that's sort of where things sort of paused for a bit. And Stacy, we'll talk more about that.
Sure. So once we get to, so that was that meeting in August of 2023. So it was really the first opportunity for both the Sheriff's Office, Goodview County, and for the City of Redding to see the information, to see the results. And at the end of that meeting, the determination was made, like, everybody kind of needs to go their separate ways, have their conversations to digest all of this information. Goodview County, we went back and had a conversation with our staff and the members who were sitting on the Law Enforcement Center Committee. The City of Redding did the same. So this timeline then outlines the conversations and the meetings that took place from August 2023 to date, to July of 2024. I'll go through each of these individually, but it gives the things that happened in September and October of '23, November of '23, January of '24, April of '24, May of '24, June and July. So if we, this is a lot of text, but it gives you an idea of the conversations that took place via email between the City of Redding and Goodview County, just talking about the options that were presented to us within those four options that Von talked about to meet the future space needs. So option one being to relocate the EOC dispatch and training off-site. The City of Redding, I encourage Goodview County to consider option number one, to relocate EOC dispatch and training off-site. They felt that it would allow a long-term continuation of a mutually beneficial partnership. And the city also indicated to us that the cost of the EOC and dispatch would be borne by the county, so that all benefiting parties within Goodview County would share the cost. The county had already, we'd already talked about option two. We, the county would be interested in partnering in a training facility, but it does not resolve the joint needs of the city and the county overall. The county's response to option number one is that we indicated we didn't believe that a majority of the board would want to bond millions of dollars to move county staff out of the building. Option three, the building addition onsite. It's plausible to the west or to the south of the facility, but we, there would need to be adequate financial structure and land acquisition to resolve the city and county needs. This would need to be a decision made of the entire county board. Number four was the Redding Police relocated off-site. This is when the City of Redding indicated to us that they'd like to take some time to explore relocating costs, that they had an office, they had potentially some, an existing building that they had that they wanted to take a look at that was outside of the Law Enforcement Center. So we go to, we had, we did have a LAC meeting in November of 2023, but we also had email correspondence that took place in October of 2023. The City of Redding again requested time to review the TSP options. We did all get back together and we provided some feedback to TSP, some very like light-level feedback to TSP. The City of Redding indicated they're looking at an off-site analysis. They wanted to explore option number four before we talked any deeper about any of the other three options, or even looked at what else we might be able to do within the facility. Goodview County staff, we requested an option number five to be brought to the table with, we heard very strongly that it was important for both agencies for that their staff to all be together on one level. So we, at that time, had requested what it would look like to put one agency in the lower level of the Law Enforcement Center and what it would look like to leave the Sheriff's Office on the main level, occupy the EOC and keep that set up as it should be. At the October meeting, the lease extension was also discussed. And it was reiterated again at that time that the, we weren't going to make any revisions to the TSP information and it was, or any other proposed options or scenarios because the City of Redding had requested to complete their off-site evaluation prior to updating that information. So that was October. November, we met again to discuss updated space allocations because there was conversations that were taking place. The Sheriff's Office was in need of bringing some of their staff back into the facility that were housed out at the Public Works. So through that process, we were able to take some of the shared spaces and turn them into 100% Goodview County spaces to be able to bring staff back into the building. So we made some adjustments to the space allocations within the new lease. We were also were able to provide a lactation room, some shared space that was taken and now has been transferred into the lactation room and is used solely for that purpose. A draft lease extension was discussed. City Redding gave us a Potter Street facility update, and they indicated at that time that they'd reach out to us to schedule the next LAC committee after the Potter Street study was completed. We roll into January. In front of the county board in January was an extension to the existing lease. It was mutually agreed upon to approve a two-year lease extension with the option to renew for one year with the following rates. And so the rates were indicated in the lease. So for 2024, the lease, the City of Redding will be paying $267,639 or $19.87 per square foot. You see the, how the numbers reflect for 2025 and 2026. And those were all indicated within the lease renewal. In April of '24, the City of Redding requested from Goodview County's letters of support to be included with their application to the Rural Development Community Facilities Grant. They indicated to us via email at that time that they were considering a new structure build. They also requested, at that time, Goodview County requested an up, an LAC meeting to update on the Potter Street building study and what the city's intent was moving forward with completing the TSP study and the outlined four options and the other options that Goodview County had outlined via email. And I explained what they were before. The, you know, each agency on a different level of the Law Enforcement Center, could that meet our needs, exploring what options we might have available in the adult detention center when it came to looking at some of our storage needs, some of the things that we don't, that could be utilized space differently in the Law Enforcement Center, discuss what other services could jointly be provided or co-locate to ease some space concerns. We also asked if they were interested in pursuing the expansion option. This brings us to May and June, which is almost to date. So may, we did have a Law Enforcement Committee meeting. Everybody was back at the table, where the City of Redding was able to share with us their intent and their process of moving forward with a possible site selection and a new build, and that, and the reason why they weren't moving forward with the Potter Street building. City of Redding indicated that a new space study was conducted with BKV, and their current and future space needs have changed since our study, since, I'll refer to it as our incomplete study because we're only at step two of the four steps. So since we met with, or since they met with TSP in 2023 to where they are today, or when they started working with BKV, they've had a change in leadership and their future needs have changed. So their growth projections and the things that they're looking for has changed. We don't have any of those numbers reflected in our numbers because that's BKV data. However, we did, we did indicate that we're interested in exploring additional options at the LAC, complete the TSP study. We also offered, offered for TSP to work collaboratively with BKV to update the information that we have, so that we had their accurate information if their vision had changed for the future. The City of Redding also requested for a lease extension option for the year of 2027. And that's when we had a county board meeting where I believe Susan and Scott gave an update and we talked about giving consensus for what a rate could be for 2027. And this was following a June 2024 council meeting where the city council did choose to select a future, a site for a future build, and they also approved moving forward with a block concept for the Police Department and a Public Works facility. Also in June, Goodview County staff, so the Sheriff's Office, Facilities Maintenance, and myself met with Von. We met with TSP to revise our data that was collected in '23, in particular, training and evidence areas, for the fact that we have now been able to lessen the need on that because of some of the purging that has been done, some of the ways that we're storing things differently, training or scanning, or moving things out of the training area into the ADC for long-term storage or being able to scan some items. That was May and June. And to current, this kind of, well, this really brings you to where we were last week or two weeks ago when we heard from the city last, was that we've provided an amendment to the extent, to, an amendment extension to the existing agreement that gives them an option to go through the end of 2027. The city, the City of Redding has shared the following information with their intent, with their ad hoc, from their ad hoc committee. So Scott and I received this email from, actually Chief Sather, that said they would like to review the City of Redding, they're going to review and accept the amendment to the lease extension for one year through 2027. They're going to start the block concept and work with BKV to include their public workspace study, along with their already-done Police Department. They'd like to wait until the block concept is completed so that the committee may review the numbers associated with space and cost. And then once the City of Redding Committee, once the Redding Ad-Hoc Committee reviews the block concept data, they intend then to meet with Goodview County and the LAC Committee regarding all of the options at the table, including their new build and potential options that we could have in the Law Enforcement Center. It was indicated to us that the block concept will take anywhere from two to three months, which I believe was, will be starting in the July timeframe. Just to, to jump into the piece, and maybe I should ask if there's any questions before I continue to go. Any questions?
Questions? Go ahead, Linda.
The cost per square foot, does that include everything, utilities, capital? I mean, that's everything combined?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So rolling into the financials piece, from '01 to the amended, July, in July of 2001, the amended joint powers agreement. So this was the piece of history again, where the city contributed a million dollars for a 15-year initial lease. They agreed to share maintenance and custodial expenses at a divided prorated based on square footage. So at that time, it was 16%. So they had paid that million dollars. And then quarterly, we would bill the City of Redding for 16% of all of the utility bills, all of the, the annual contracts, elevator contracts. The Sheriff's Office also had different agreements where they had shared copy machines, they had shared other computer equipment, where all of those services would be billed then at that percentage, in addition to the, it was calculated out at the $66,666. And then January 1 of 2014 through December of 2023, when we renegotiated that lease, the City of Redding was looking in, looking, asking for an all-in number, so that we didn't have to do that quarterly billing of what the actual rates were. During that agreement, the rent amount was inclusive of all utilities, custodial, building grounds, capital expenditures. So there was a specific amount of time where there was a set rate, and then we used the CPI. The amendment to the office lease space, which is currently what we're...
Question. When we did that second lease, it was under the assumption that they were still using only 16% of the building?
Correct.
We did not do a study to figure out
No.
if it was more than 16%.
Nope. We just used the 16% number. The space study is what helped us determine that we weren't factoring in the hallways, the restrooms, the, the whole public corridor rotunda when you come into the building. So those numbers changed, the amount of space, the percentage of space changed based on all of those shared spaces when we got to January 1 of '24. And again, the, the three different amounts that are being used for '24, '25 and '26. And again, the City of Redding has requested an additional year, which has been drafted and sent to the City of Redding. And that will, would include an inflationary CPI factor. I know you can't read this. Don't expect you to. So when we started going through the work of determining what the City of Redding has paid in the past, what our actual costs are to operate that building and the amount of space, our Facilities Maintenance Director and the Finance Director, well, Lucas was the controller at the time, went through and actually pulled all of the data, because we didn't have the data anymore of, you know, what each of the utility bills were. We did for the first 15 years, but we didn't for the next chunk. So they went through and pulled all the data from '21 and '22 of just the annual facilities operating expenses. So what this shows you is your operating expenses for 2022, the actual on the left-hand column. And we did take that by the 16%. So the City of Redding's portion of, if we would have billed the 16% of the utilities to the City of Redding at that point, it would have been $212,500. utilities to the city of Redding at that point, it would have been $212,594. Over on the far right-hand side, you'll see that the lease, the lease, all-in lease rate that was agreed upon years prior to that was $144,398.
I believe, because if I just look at $19,000, that's not 16%. I think those were the actual 43% or whatever. Well, you can look at it. Take 16% of $19,288, and it's not going to be $8,000.
Okay. Lucas proof these, I would have to defer to him.
I believe that's correct. I think that's some updated, updated square footage numbers.
Oh, that is the updated number?
But it may not be the 45%.
Well, but it's close to that because half of 470 would be, you know, 225 or 260. So 12, that is the 43%. That's not 16.
Right.
Yeah, it's not 16%.
Yep, it's the 45. I apologize. So then in the bottom right-hand corner in that box just shows the agreed-upon lease rates in November of '23. And then we updated the square footage to reflect some square footage, some actual 100% city of Redding stuff and some shared stuff coming off. So their numbers were reduced. So that shows the reflected numbers that were included in the lease extension. And it shows what they've agreed upon for three years. And that's the end of the very wordy, lots of information. A lot of work has been happening. A lot of conversations have been taking place. We feel that, you know, again, we're in a holding pattern with the city of Redding when it comes to what their intent is to do. We've been very clear that Goody County is interested in working with the city of Redding and how can we partner with both agencies within the building and are willing to, to sit at the table if their choice is not to move forward with their own facility. But how can, how can we make this work in this building? Whether it's a combination of working with TSP and a combination of working with BKV together, but how can we make this all work if that's the intent?
Questions?
So my, if I go back, we use about 18, just over 18,000 square feet and the city uses just over 15,000 square feet. Is that, I'm going back to the green boxes way back on
I think that's right, Brad. Yes.
Pretty close.
Yeah.
But that, that's
I mean, that's where I was trying to, there it was. So you add those two together on each one? Or is it 50% of 11,300 square feet?
So this is where it would have been incredibly beneficial for Lucas to not be on vacation today or this week. I mean, really, this is, these are the space allocations.
The real question is, is 11,000, 11,300, is that the total square feet of shared space? Or is the total square feet of shared space 22,600?
I believe that if you look at the top boxes, I believe the exclusive space is, you know, 3,800 for Redding and 7,000 for Goody.
Yep.
And then I believe we each share 50% of the 11,299.
That's correct.
50% of that?
Yes.
Or that is 50% of the square footage?
We use 50% of that.
That's correct. So the total amount of shared space is 11,299. We use 50%.
Because somewhere I thought I read that there was 34,000.
I was just going to say, I think that the 11,300 is their portion of
Exactly.
22,600.
Because I thought the total space was 34,000.
Right around 34,000.
Which if you add those all together, you get 34,000. Okay. That's what I, so, so I wanted my understanding to be
Correct.
It's 15,000 square feet for the city and about 18,000 square feet, a little over for both. But, okay. That's what I really wanted to get to that number. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jason?
Comment. Do you, I guess, my end goal would be, yes, hopefully we can maintain and keep the city partner here in the LEC. Assuming somewhere along the way you guys have actually printout or photo, whatever, floor plan that you send us shows one, floor 1, 2, 3, office, training, bathrooms. Very helpful from a visual standpoint to look at this and say, where is everything, what it is and how we can do that. Would hope to have easy access, I'm assuming you do.
Yep.
If you have all those that are not included, please send that to us as soon as you can that we can look at that.
Can you turn your mic down, sorry?
And then the other aspect, to keep bringing this cause, and just for clarification about, the city doesn't like being stuck in the basement. So just for my clarification, without seeing those pictures, where are they at in the basement? Because I thought the last time I was in it, the third floor, on the backside, all had windows. But you're saying the third floor toward the parking lot, is that where the city got stuffed? And so they have offices with no windows? Or what's the problem with the basement? If maybe somebody can say what?
Yeah, no. So the, when we looked at it, we basically looked at how the Redding Police Department, with a small addition, basically where the patrol room is at, so off of, I believe, Fifth Street, correct? Off of that street, so it's street level. There would, you could put some windows in. I mean, there may not be, I'm not quite sure. There might be some in there. Oh, yeah, that's right. They're up high.
They're up on top, okay.
But we could put some vision glass in, so where you could see out. But yeah, that's where we were looking at and trying to really consolidate them as much as possible. Sort of there, kind of keeping the training where it's at, keeping evidence in the locker rooms where it's at, and then putting a majority of the space needs for Redding patrol room and kind of what's currently occupied.
I'm just still trying to clarify if they, you know, if they feel like they're getting stuffed in the basement. So a lot of times people associate being in the basement, I don't have a window. I can't, you know, so I'm just saying, are their, their chief's office is in the basement and he has no, he can't see outside? And all their chief? What?
If I could answer. So currently, no, they're not, they're not all stuffed in the basement. There, we have, everybody's got staff in the basement, but like the chief level is on, on the main level as you walk in. What Vaughn did is just simply took the numbers and said, if this is what the city of Redding needs, you could fit in this space in the basement. And we also said, we understand we'd need to put windows in. We understand maybe you want a separate entrance. We understand we'd need to make modifications. But square footage-wise, yes, they can fit in the basement. We did hear loud and clear they don't want to be there.
Okay.
And I think they also visualized that we wouldn't make modifications, but that's not what we were talking about.
That makes more sense. So they're not stuffed in the basement. They're not, it's just as if we had to do, spend money to remodel, which we're not necessarily planning on doing, that they would, okay. I got you. So in the other aspect that we looked at this with the space aspect is that hopefully we, and we're not making any inroads on it very quick, is that when we talked about dispatch, we really, really, really need to keep focusing and pushing on regional dispatch. I don't think we're moving. I thought we had a board, I thought the board had a consensus or majority said, we need to roll to this. And we're talking about this with dispatch taking up a large portion of it, but, you know, do you really, we got to think about this because all of a sudden we could be moving into this with space and remodeling and doing this other stuff. And we got dispatch, which is a part of it. So.
Susan?
Well, I, I'm sorry that the councilwoman had to leave. She had to go at 10:15, but that's just the way life is. But anyway, you know, the, our committee, it took a long time to come to some kind of agreement about what the lease rate was, and there was a lot of contention about that. I, I think that the current number with CPI increases for the current space, I think that's something that the council would go for going forward. Of course, that's based on talking to a couple people and it doesn't say what the whole council would support, but I think they would. And I attended the council meeting where the presentation was done about the different spaces and the different buildings. And they were really looking at block designs for a number of things. And included, they talked about looking for a block design for what it could look like over here. But they didn't want to go forward with that because they didn't, didn't know that the county was interested. And so I think one question that they would have, I think, is whether or not the county would cover half the cost of looking at the possible redesigns of the current space to accommodate both. And so I, I believe they would pay half and would ask that we would pay half, which we, I think, basically that's how the space study was split before, I believe. I, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
So they're asking that, that another step be done to the space study, that the costs are shared. And that seemed reasonable to me. The other thing I'll just comment on is, and I'm not talking about city council people when I say this, the only issue that people talk to me about when I walk around town is why can't the county and the city get this worked out? And so that's not city council people, it's random people coming up to me. And that is the only issue that I'm asked about. And so for my district, people expect that county government and city government, not where the county is supplementing the city, but that the two should be able to work together for the betterment of all. And I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to do that, too. And I, I think that lower level could be pretty nice with windows, but at this point, I think that at least we need one other option to present to them because I think that, that right now, the notion of being in the lower level is very unappealing to the city council.
And I will also note, too, just to be clear, you know, the study that we had done on that lower level was based on the numbers we had received from them
Yes, I understand that. I understand that.
I don't know the new numbers, which I think we have increased. So I don't know what, how that would apply.
So I think the two questions from my mind for the board needing to give direction are these lease numbers for the current space reasonable and is studying this further reasonable? And I had a lengthy discussion with Kim Bice about it. And he said that certainly, his understanding was if remodeling of current space needed to be done for them, that that would be their expense, not ours. He apparently rents out properties. And if it has to be remodeled for a new person coming in, he doesn't cover that cost. So I, I don't think that they are expecting us to cover the cost of remodeling space for them. At least that's what I heard from Mr. Bice.
On option one, the relocate EOC dispatch and training off-site, Sheriff, can you speak to why that doesn't work? Why that's not a good idea?
Maybe Sheriff, because Scott, did you have a
I did. I was just going to add on to your discussion about joint dispatch, but I'll go after Sheriff Kelly.
I don't know that I ever said it was a bad idea. It probably would cost the county about $50 million to do that. I don't think the county's prepared to do that. And it'd be nice to have all our staff on, in one building. That's the reason.
Okay, well.
And by the way, dispatch does not take up a lot of space.
And following up on what Jason said, has there been any more talk about regional dispatch? Okay, now you're on, huh?
Yes. Okay, let me, let me go backwards on the joint dispatch discussion. If you go back to the, the policy committees last year at AMC district meetings, both Olmsted and Rice and Steele all said they're still looking for partners and would entertain that. Commissioner Majeris, I believe in about the November timeframe, also asked for that to be considered. At that time, I reached out to Sheriff Kelly and Captain Stephens. Captain Stephens forwarded the last study that had been done on joint dispatch to the county board and asked, hey, you know, read this and let me know if you want to have further discussion on it. To my knowledge, I don't know that Sheriff Kelly or Captain Stephens heard from the county board that, yes, we want to pursue doing a study after they read that, that study, that communication that came out in December of 2023. So that's where that's at. If you want to pursue that, then Sheriff Kelly needs to hear that and we need to start having committee of the holes. And I do know, I, I think Rice and Steele are definitely interested in partners. It did sound like from the administrator in Olmsted that they may be, they're interested in partners, but maybe weren't ready to have the discussion. And I don't, Brad's, I think Brad's actually talked with some of the counties too, so he may have more information on that.
I'm on the Southeast Communications Board and there's been definite discussion at those board meetings with the regional. What they're looking at a lot is sharing the communications and the software for it, which we're already doing with several counties. So there's a big expense. So yes, we still have the physical dispatch in our counties, but what we're doing, the, the heart and soul of the dispatch with the active 911 and all those things are on the one system. So there is some savings by combining those. So, you know, the next step obviously would be say, okay, we only need Rochester. We only need it in Oatana. Can take care of the whole southeastern part of the state. I mean, you know, I think those options are available. The electronics are, you know, technology is just advancing so quickly as to that. So I think one of the problems is that so many of us are updated, you know, and at the current. So, you know, is this all going to come to play in 10 years or eight years or 15 years? I don't know where that's, where that's at.
Well, and the old study said that it wasn't cost-effective in the end. So we'd have to do another, another study to see if it's still not cost-effective or maybe it is now with technology. But that would entail another whole study.
So I'm interested in your opinion as to, I mean, as the sheriff, how do you feel about regional dispatch?
I've had to thought, I've thought about it quite a bit. As you know, sheriffs like control a little bit, and that's not a lie. I've heard a lot from our sheriffs in our district, and there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of buy-in, if you will. But to be honest, it's not our issue. It's, it's the county boards at this point. And I, I know I've told Brad that before. Take the ball and run with it. And I would support whatever the, the board wishes. It is, it's nice to have your staff on board. You'd hate to lose staff, obviously.
Is the reason, though, the feeling of you're giving up control of dispatch if you go regionally? For sheriffs, I mean?
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't know how to answer that. It's, for me, it would probably work. It works for Minnesota State Patrol to some extent. We just got a State Patrol dispatcher and they didn't like it, or she didn't like it. She likes more of a, a regional, or not regional, but local, I guess, access. She didn't like dispatching for, bought that Minnesota, down in southeast Minnesota.
Thank you.
The only comment I'd make about Olmsted County, my understanding was it was Olmsted County and the city of Rochester were kind of melding together. And their reason for not wanting to do more is they need to work out all the bugs on that first, is what I understood.
I think there's some relationship issues there.
Yep, there has been. There has been. And, you know, Sheriff Kelly is exactly right. Dispatch always ends up in most counties under the sheriff, but it's really under the county. The county has the, has the ability to put dispatch however they want to do it. I went, I worked at Neighbor Tractor, as many know, when the whole deal with Dakota County where they combined all their dispatches, all their cities and everything together. Enormous expense. Great benefits, once they got it all done, but it was really expensive to do that in the get-go. And everybody, every township pays into dispatch now. Not just counties. It's every township, every fire department, everybody has a bill for dispatch now. So I think if you, you know, and that's just one model, but is, is the cities and the counties, if they do this, do they end up splitting that bill out farther than just counties paying for their portion or whatever? So there's a lot to work, to do, regional dispatch. I really think as we get to next gen 911 is really the place where regional dispatch should be really considered at that point. Because you are, you are absolutely lining up county lines and roads and everything in the GIS system with that. And they do a good job of it now. It's just, I, I've heard that there's a lot of work that needs to be done to get everybody on the same page to get to next gen 911. So I think it's a possibility. I think in this instance, what we're talking about today, it's not, we'll never get there with this, for this study. So I, I don't even think trying to go there right now is the answer. We need to deal with the here and now and think about that, but that's a five-year planning to get to regional dispatch. Five years at least.
Other comments from the board?
I, I'm a little bit surprised at what the, the cities and the county can't get along because I think, I think we've worked in good faith to come up with something that shows that, you know, we've adjusted to what we are today. We aren't what we were. The 16% was absolutely totally wrong. It was a wrong number when we renewed in '14. And it should have, that's probably where it should have been looked at. where it should have been looked at. Do I think the rates we've got? I mean, they'll be okay, but there's nothing in there that says if the cost of maintenance goes up thirty percent, that we make any adjustment in here for the cost of maintenance. So long-term, I can go through this for twenty-seven. I, I don't think the numbers are the right numbers, they probably should be higher to actually talk about what, and I'll use the return on investment for us as far as what we've invested in that building cost-wise to get any return on that. These numbers are low, and then there's no escalating, there's no way of adjusting it for four years now for the cost of maintenance. It's going to be the same, and that, that I don't think is accurate. So I can go with it, but going from twenty-seven on, there's a different number. There's a totally different number. And it's only, you know, it goes to my whole value system about equity, about across the board, so.
Well, that would make sense, though, because in four years, I mean, the whole world's going to be different in four years, the world's changing so fast, so it's a contract up for four years.
That's what I said, I can support this for four years, but at the end of four years, there's going to be a whole lot of different changes to that number.
Right, the world's going to be a different place.
And quite frankly, when they get their numbers on what it will cost for them to build, I think that will be telltale as to where we should be at for cost per square foot for rent of the square foot.
I, I do just need to point out that the number we're going to is higher than any other county charges any other city.
But every other county, every other county has a different reason for what they're doing.
Right.
Our reason, our reason is we want to share space with the Redwing Police Department. Should that, should we discount that price to keep them there? And I don't think so. That's why I say, once they get their numbers on what it costs to build, the return on investment number will become more clear. Much more clear to us and much more clear to them.
So one of them was a remodel in two thousand and fourteen, and one of them was, I think, new space or the contract was two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and thirty-nine. And so I think that was maybe the more head one, I don't remember for sure. Yeah.
Everybody does stuff for different reasons, whether they're counties, cities, or townships, so, or school districts. So averages doesn't, doesn't play into things as much to me as what are the costs? And what does it mean going forward for the county residents? Because that's who I have to answer to.
Sure. And then I also will point out, if they aren't with us, at least at the current contract, we'd be three hundred and sixty thousand dollars less in income, and perhaps, perhaps there would be a third of that saved from less expenses, but everybody's taxes are going to go up, including people who don't live in Redwing, if the county isn't taking that money in. It, it's a little bit like the argument about taking Dakota County prisoners for less than the cost. I think the full cost of a prisoner is around a hundred and fifty bucks a day, and I think we charge Dakota County fifty-five bucks a day. But we do that because we aren't, and we don't have more costs by having the Dakota County prisoners there. So I'm not suggesting that we give Redwing a particularly sweet deal, but I am suggesting we have to pay attention to what income we're not going to have, and how are we going to make up that income if they're not there.
And I, I can see that. The same's going to be true if cities don't have police forces and we're.
Sure.
I mean, that's, that's, it's a balancing act. I'm not saying we need to get all the cost out of it, but that's not what I'm saying, but if it costs four hundred dollars or whatever a square foot to build, then renting a tomb for nineteen dollars and eighty-seven cents and knowing that thirteen or fourteen of that is just the cost of maintenance and upkeep, that's not a realistic number for anybody, for us or for them, really. That's what I'm saying.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll just talk about the relationship and then, you know, increase in costs a little bit. So I, I only can comment on the last seventeen years, but the relationship currently and the ability to work together with the city of Redwing, it's, it's probably the best it's ever been. And, you know, Sheriff has worked well with the chief of police, and our finance and administration has worked very well, too. So I, I think that that's there, we've expressed the willingness to, to work together with them, so, and hopefully that's, you know, the way we move forward. I did want to just comment through this process, when we went through the numbers, I mean, there was very little argument about that, hey, these numbers are wrong, they, those are the numbers. And one of the things that their finance director said is that, you know, we do need at some point, and he's talking, he's not talking in the short-term leases, he's talking long-term, but, you know, if, if construction and energy costs ever change as drastically as they did during the, the last lease, there needs to be some type of circuit breaker. Marshall said that, I believe him, he's, he's right. I mean, we got to the point where we were expending more than we were getting, and that, they, they themselves said that's wrong, too. So I think there's the willingness to fix that in the future, too.
And, and I think, you know, from the county's perspective, I, I think we're doing a better job working with Prairie Island, we're doing a better job working with their townships, we're doing a better job, I think, working with the city of Redwing. I think we are making strides from where we were fifteen years ago. I, I think anybody that had that snapshot back then, I looked at it now, would say, yes, we are working better, all involved, because we're making a concerted effort to do it. That's really what it amounts to. We're investing and making a concerted effort to do it, do a better job in those areas, so.
I'll just add one final thing. When we talk about the lease rate and the cost per square foot, that is one of the things that we've asked TSP, Vaughn and TSP, we've tasked them with, you know, what are, what are the rates that are out there? What are different places currently charging? What are the different definitions of the different ways that leases are developed that are drawn up? Are they an all-in? Are they just a, you know, the utilities? Like you, you've got some fancy terms for some of that stuff, but that is something that we've asked Vaughn within our contract within the space study is to help us determine what some of the, what some of the rates are out there? What is the right rate that we should be charging? What is the way that everybody else around us is doing it when it comes to vacant spaces? And then also, not only are we looking at, you know, you know, we wouldn't want to compare to residential, we won't want to compare it to all commercial, but we're also, we're offering a secure hardened facility. It's a law enforcement center that has, you know, has different amenities to it, so that is something that we've tasked him with, and we will have that information in the future when we start to talk about what the future numbers look like.
Anything else?
Good information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice, nice job.
Anyone sitting out there? Anyone else? John, anyone else have any comments?
John hasn't had the microphone yet today.
Yep. All right, thank you, everyone.